This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the regular council meeting of May 6, 2024.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Here.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
Please rise by pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes or the agenda? Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
We'll get there, folks.
Were there any modifications to the agenda this evening?
No.
No? Approval of the minutes? Any issues? Public comment. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed, and all comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience. Anyone?
Hi. Kevin Kinter, 390 South Lawn, Alpena, Michigan. I just wanted to, I think I was out of town a couple of the last meetings. I noticed there was another local family purchaser of a previously, a property that was previously a duplex, and they, it was a family-connected type thing. And here's this person who I don't believe is going to live in the house. May have been their recent, most recent request for a variance. And here's another person considering not turning it into two rentals that could be available for someone for local housing with the current shortage and so forth. And just making sure maybe there is a connecting of the dots, maybe to relax, amend, suspend, whatever you want to, whatever the appropriate term is, to make this a paved-surface condition. Give it a break for some period of your choosing. Three years, five years, seven years, to see if that helps relax the housing shortage here in Alpena. Thank you.
That is on our agenda this evening, too. And there was a modification for doing them all at once.
Thanks for being there.
Anyone else?
Sam Rumbles, 119 North Second Avenue. Just coming to voice my support for the permanent closure of the alleyway. Being a business owner, you know, less than one door down from that, walking down the alleyway every day, I think that it's been only positives so far, luckily. It's, maybe there could even be some better usage, like if it were permanently closed off for like events and that sort of thing. So, yeah, just wanted to say I'm all for that item on the agenda.
Thank you. One else? Anyone online?
Nobody online.
We have no public hearing consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $414,161.61, unauthorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign the warrant. B, council appointment of Michael Babcock to the Recreation Advisory Board for three-year term expiring on May 1st, 2027. C, approval of the cemetery deed, 0297, buy-in between the city and Carol June Cattarett, amount of $1,000 per block 24, lot 55, and for the use and purpose of lot burial, burial lot with perpetual care, and authorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign said deed. This is a transfer to an heir from a relative, and therefore there is no fee. D, approval of a cemetery deed, number 0298, buy-in between the city of Alpena and Donna Olson in the amount of $745 for block 40, lot 1B3, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, and authorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign said deed. E is approval of cemetery deed, number 0299, buy-in between the city of Alpena and Kim and Jill Olson in the amount of $4,470 for block 40, lots 23, 24, 43, 44, 45, and 46, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, and authorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign said deed.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember King?
Yes. Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Proton Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
We have an announcement. The term for mayor and two council members members will expire on December 31, 2024. Deadline for city candidates who are nominated by petition to the November general election is July 23, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. Nonpartisan nominating petitions are, and affidavits of identity forms are available in the city clerk's office. Ten, we have a proclamation. So, this, this is a proclamation. Whereas the Friends of Alpena Garden, Alpena Area Gardens was formed in 2023 as a collaborative effort to beautify gardens throughout the city of Alpena. And individuals from Alpena Senior Citizen Center, Huron Pines, Alpena Garden Club, Pied Piper School, and the Master Garden Program, the Alpena Downtown Development Authority, and the City of Alpena have collaborated to bring the groups' projects to life and raise awareness of the city's adopt-a-garden program. And whereas the group's efforts have resulted in an increase in adoptions of the city gardens by various citizens and community service groups. And whereas the group's efforts have also increased partnerships between various public, private, and educational entities to beautify areas within the city with additional flowers and garden spaces. Whereas the group has organized events each weekend in May to beautify city gardens and raise awareness about ways to get involved with the group's efforts, including a sip cider and dish dirt event at Preskill Farm Cider on May 4th, the Pied Piper Spring Plant Sale on May 10th and May 11th, Storytime and Garden with Alpena County George and Fletcher Public Library on May 11th, an invasive species walk-and-talk with Huron Pines along the Great Lakes Maritime Heritage Center with Huron Pines on May 18th, the Downtown Flower Planting and Cleanup Day on May 25th. And whereas the Friends of Alpena Area Gardens intend to organize events each May moving forward to encourage a positive benefit of gardening and encouraging, and encourage community involvement to tend to gardens throughout the city. Now, therefore, I, Cindy Johnson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim May as Garden Month within the city of Alpena. And we have members from these groups who'll come and take a picture.
Mrs. Preskill misses it.
Yeah, I don't know. Do they want to be in it? Funny ears.
Get out here. Try to hide behind one that's close.
What? Do you want us to move forward?
Andy, can you pull that sheet, please? I'm sorry. Can you assist?
Behind me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir. There you go.
Are we ready? Now, we're to report of officers. And we have A, second reading of ordinance number 24-503, which amends the city of Alpena zoning map. And we'll turn that over to Bill.
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read a second time unless one of the individual members wishes for me to read it. This is probably located at 211 North 12th. Will be utilized as a duplex. It has been through the Planning Commission approval already. So, we just need a vote. I say yea or nay, but I want to do it.
Mr. Mayor, I have no questions.
No questions.
Okay. And I've lost my internet, so I've lost my packet. But I will do the best I can. So, Anna, you want to?
I'll have to get a motion here for that. Yes, okay.
Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance 24-503 to amend the city of Alpena zoning map.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. B, council policy statement for council and mayoral appointments. And once again, City Attorney Bell?
Couple months back, Anna asked me, what is the definition of a taxpayer? I said, it's someone who pays taxes. What she said.
I can imagine the look.
She said, we need something more than that. So, we've talked about this internally. You know, the charter provides certain definitions or language, I should say, not a definition. But really, we just wanted to have something for her to tell potential candidates, whether they're by appointment or running for office, as to what it means. And so, this number is just a brief explanation of what I think we should adopt. It's going to be a more comprehensive council. But in light of the pending election, we thought we should get something on paper just so that if there is a question or a challenge from any of the candidates, that we have something besides just saying it's somebody that pays taxes. So, this was a shot at it. My understanding is that some of the members wanted to make some more meat or some more, some changes to it. So, we've got one or two options. If there's changes that everybody agrees on today, you could still vote on it and have it go into effect now. Or alternatively, if you wanted the language modified and brought back for the next meeting, we can do that as well. So, I'm not sure Rachel wants to address specifically the language, but...
So, I did receive a few comments back today and had, you know, reworked one through four a bit. And, you know, again, this is just from my notes. So, looking at number one, we would say a current lease or agreement for a premises lease rented within the city, signed by both parties. A signed, number two, a signed land contract or mortgage for a premises located within the city where the individual resides. Number three, a deed provided by a property owner for a premises located within the city where the individual resides. And number four, a real or personal property tax bill in the individual's name for a property located within the city where the individual resides. And so, I mean, that's what I got from the comments today, but there may be more.
And I suggested, said there's a lot to this that needs to be in the pack. But I suggested they all have to say they reside at wherever, whatever it is. It has to say that's where they reside. Even the first one.
Yep.
They have to reside. Times change. Sometimes people's names weren't put on deeds. That's just the way it was. We may eliminate certain, the population who can't produce a deed that they legally own. This, particularly when this came through, I had to scramble to go find my deed. Because the tax bill is in my husband's name that I pay. I thought, oh, dear God. My name is on the deed, but there are going to be people through the cracks, and we have to address it. We live in different times, and things change. We have to cover all the bases. So, my concern is, I agree with all of the changes, but I do think, you know, okay, what do you do about individuals who, who, you know, live together but aren't married?
Exactly right. I agree with you on that fact because there's, they are a resident. In a way, they are paying taxes. They have resided at that for a long time. Do we ask then that they get a letter from their significant other that says, yes, they have resided here, and yes, they have paid taxes and stuff? You know, because there are plenty of examples out there, you know? And the other that I brought up was when I was a landlord years ago, there was a lot of landlords within the city that did not do a lease, just do an agreement, oh, give me first month, last month, and you can stay here until one of us is ready to have the other one out. And there was nothing even legal that I, that I was aware of. But there were landlords that were doing that. So, that's why I said if there's some kind of an agreement where both parties would sign that say, yeah, they've been living with me for so many years, and they do reside at this rate, boom. You know, they both sign it, and there's something that staff can go off of, you know, for that. Because there are so many different scenarios that could possibly play out.
Right. And of course, this is in our city charter, which is really old. And there's quite the process to go through to make amendments to the charter. So, in the interim, we just needed direction on, okay, what type of documentation are we allowed to, to accept when we're vetting candidates?
I would also like to consider, just so that we can have discussion about it, is about, you know, somebody who came home from college is working out of their parents' house. How, they should be covered as well. I mean, they're contributing. If, you know, they're just, there's all kinds of scenarios where you just don't want anyone to fall through the cracks.
Sure.
Okay.
Documentation would we do then at the time of filing?
Yes.
So, that being said, do we want to send it back?
I don't know, there didn't look like she had a question.
Well, I'm just taking it all in. But, I mean, it does seem that, just based on what you just said, that there might be more than just those four, unless there's some language in there that says, you know, these are examples, but not limited to the types of proof that can provide. Because, I mean, even like my legal brain, Bill, you can probably attest to this. When I heard reside, I'm like, well, what is, what do you mean by reside? You're domiciled here? It says you're principal residence? So, anyway, I just, if, if we want it to be clear-cut and defined, then maybe we should table it till the next meeting. But if we want it to be broad and up to the person who's receiving whatever documentation to make that call, then we could put that in there. That is what I was thinking, top of my head.
And then maybe have some kind of a, not a disclaimer exactly, but some sort of clause stating certain special cases could be determined by the council on a case-by-case basis. By, by Bill?
Okay. I think whatever we do, we just want to be consistent about it until, you know, at some point, we can modernize the charter.
Just a temporary fix.
Right.
So, what if somebody turns it in on July 23rd at 4:00 p.m.? And we have to run it past you? We don't have time if it doesn't qualify to make an extension of that? Because that's the duty. I guess filers would be encouraged to file early.
And maybe we, and maybe we have a sheet that says that. If you're a tenant or landlord, any, you know, file early issues.
We recommend that, too, for anybody that is filing in case they don't get enough signatures, because we look up every single one. And if you don't have the minimum requirement, then you have to have time to go back and get one.
That's always, I always, you know, you gave me those in March. I usually wanted to have them back in April, you know, just for the fact in case, you know?
If we have time to move this to a future meeting, we're already two and a half months out from the deadline.
Yeah, I think we got, we'll do it to next meeting.
Is everyone good with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
It's good.
Yeah.
Postpone. Change to postpone.
I move that we postpone this item until our next scheduled meeting.
Postponing it.
You can't support, but you can second.
You're rubbing off on me.
You what?
Uh, yes. I'm already saying it, so aye. Old habits.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes.
Fiscal year 24, 25 preliminary budget presentation, and Anna will make the presentation.
Budget has been many months of collaboration between department heads, the city manager. It's been a lot of work. It's many hours of sitting in budget session meetings and trying to put this all together and figure it out. A special thanks goes to department heads and to the city manager for all the time and effort you put into the budget. Extra special thanks goes to Jennifer Barant in my office, who puts this whole thing together, and it is a huge undertaking, and she does a phenomenal job with her. So, many thanks to her. All right, we're already on the right page. So, the narratives at the top are per charter what I'm supposed to present to you. So, this screen is a brief and concise budget summary showing the estimated receipts and expenditures of each fund and the total of all funds. A statement of the estimated financial condition of each city fund reflecting the estimated surplus or deficit in each such fund. So, this slide is showing all of the funds that we budget for. There's all the ones that we're not required to budget. So, just looking at the first one is the general fund. The first column of numbers, oh, this is the old presentation. Do you have a new one, Steve? It's on the website. This got updated this morning.
Go straight to email.
Yep. Yeah, these are old numbers. Do you have the correct one in front of you?
I think so.
Let me relax me out.
Okay.
Back into the IT issues here, there.
Do you want to look at my computer?
Oh, I have it. I have mine, but it's just on the screen. It's up there.
Right.
Right, yeah, here.
The correct one. I have the one that was sent later this morning.
Yeah, yeah. My apologies for that. I don't know what happened.
Oh, okay. Because you sent that separately to us in another email, so, yeah.
Yep. I did check it this afternoon, and it was, was the updated version.
We know an IT guy.
I have one of them, too.
Yes, that is correct. Is there a way to make that bigger?
I guess it gets right there.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Let's try this again. General fund, the column that is all the way to the left, the first column of numbers. The estimated revenues for the current fiscal year are just over $13 million. Expenditures are over $14 million, which leaves a deficit of $1,013,408. Originally, when we passed this budget last year, we had anticipated using $932,121 from fund balance. So, even though we did that transfer to the equipment fund for the fire truck, it's still, we made other adjustments during the whole process that kind of absorbed that, I guess you could say. So, it's really only another $100,000 more than originally anticipated. Going down, or, I'm sorry, going along the fourth column of numbers over the 25 revenues is where we're projecting for the next fiscal year. And that is at $13,035,000. Expenditures at $13,750,000, which leaves a deficit of $714,657. This gives us a projected unassigned general fund balance at the end of fiscal year '25 of 20%, which, as you recall, is at the high end of, or, it's right in line with our fund balance policy, 10 to 20%. The fund balance at June 30 of '23 was, was almost at $4.4 million. The estimated fund balance at June 30 of '24 is estimated to drop to $3.3 million. And then estimated fund balance at June 30 of '25, $2.67 million. You'll see in the estimated fund balance at June 30, '24 column, there's a couple red numbers in there. There's 821 negative for the Marina Fund, and that's something I'm going to fix. I didn't see that until I put this together. So, I'm gonna, so that's going to mean we're going to have to do a little bit more of a transfer from the general fund. So, we're going to use up all of the fund balance in the Marina Fund in fiscal year '24. And then, let's see, in '25, we're going to add to fund balance with $46,750. Going down to the ARPA fund, that is also a very large negative number of almost $900,000. That is because revenue doesn't become fund balance until it's earned. So, even though we've received the ARPA funds, we technically haven't earned them yet because we haven't spent them. So, at June 30, '23, we had $21,852. But really, we've, I think we've spent like 100, almost 140,000. There's still quite a bit there, but we anticipate using that in this fiscal year. It has to be obligated by December 31st of this year. And obligated means we have to have some sort of agreement or a purchase order on file. Can't just have it in our budget. It's not obligated. Any questions on this page? Okay. Next page, please. This one is an estimate of the amount of money proposed to be raised by taxation and the amount to be raised from bond issues, which, together with the estimated income from other sources, will be necessary to meet the proposed expenditures. So, on the left side is the, the general fund. And the total estimated revenue from taxation is $5,21,000. Total estimated revenue from other sources is over $8 million. Our total estimated revenue for the general fund is over $13 million. And estimated general fund expenditures is $13.75 million. So, we do not have enough from taxation to cover that. But this is, this is using up fund balance. We, we cannot increase our city operating because it's rolled back by Headley. On the right side of this screen is the authority for brownfield redevelopment. We have $3,000 that we are anticipating from tax increments for 600 Walnut Street. Other sources of revenue, we've got $3,000 for a total of $6,000. Estimated expenditures are $3,800. And there will be a $2,100 addition to fund balance. And then in the DDA fund, estimated revenue from taxation is $220,700. Estimated revenue from other sources is $364,000 for a total of $584,000. Total estimated expenditures, $752,921 for reduction. Total estimated expenditures, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for reduction from fund balance of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-five. And that, I believe, is because of the facade grants. Anne is nodding her head, yes. Any question on that page? The next page is a detailed statement of estimates of all anticipated income of the city from sources other than current taxes and borrowing. Compared with the amounts received by the city from each of the same or similar resources for the last preceding and for the current year. Receipts for the current year shall be computed as the actual receipts to April first, plus the estimated receipts for April, May, and June. So this is, this is everything. This is very detailed. I'm not gonna go through this. Just to show you how it works is we've got fiscal year twenty-three's activity. And then we've got the amended budget for fiscal year twenty-four, the current budget. The next column is activity for the current fiscal year through March thirty-first. And then the next column is estimating where we're gonna be for April, May, and June of this fiscal year. The next column, projected activity, is where those two columns totaled up, where we think we're gonna end fiscal year twenty-four. The next one over is the difference between budget and estimated. And then finally, the column only to the right is the recommended budget for fiscal twenty-five. So we'll skip through that section and go to page forty, please, Shannon, of the PDF. Should be the detailed expenses. Perfect, thank you. So this one, uh, it's the exact same setup as the revenue, the detailed revenue. This one is a statement of the detailed estimates of all proposed expenditures for each fund, including a statement of all salaries paid to city officials. Itemized for each department and activity by objects of expenditure showing in parallel columns the expenditures for the preceding year, the appropriation and expenditures for the current year, and the recommendations of the city manager as to the appropriations to be made for the ensuing year, including an appropriation for contingencies, contingencies, and showing the increases or decreases in the recommended appropriations over the expenditures for the current year. Expenditures for the current year shall be computed as the actual expenditures to April first, plus the estimated expenditures for April, May, and June. So, set up exactly the same way as the previous. Any questions on any expenses that I can clarify? All right, we'll go to page sixty-nine. This is the statement of salaries for city officials for fiscal year twenty-five. I think you gotta go. There you go. Mayor and council members are the same as it has been for a few years now. Um, this will be through the end of, well, this is for calendar year twenty-four, but I believe it's the same for next year, too. Um, the city manager, um, is hundred fifteen thousand eight seventy-five. That was the increase that was approved earlier, and then also a three percent increase as per the whole salary schedule that went up for administration. Uh, the clerk treasurer finance director, one oh five seven oh eight. The city attorney at sixty-nine seven sixty-three. The city engineer, one oh five seven oh eight. The two chiefs, police and fire, one hundred thousand six seventy-eight. The city planning and development director, eighty-eight thousand four eighty-six. And the city building official is on, is under contract. There's no questions there. We'll go to the next page. This one is a statement of the bonded and other indebtedness of the city, showing the amount required in the ensuing fiscal year for retirement of principal on the debt, for interest, and for a sinking fund for term bonds if such a fund is required. On the left side, we have, um, the state revolving loan fund, and this is paid by utility user rates. We have six years left. Well, that is exciting to get that paid off. Um, below that is the SRF and DWRF ineligible expenses, which is also paid from utility user rates. We've got four years left on that. On the right side is the building authority. This was the DPW building construction. Um, these bonds were refunded in two thousand thirteen, and we have, two, three, six years left on that one, too. And then below that is the DWRF, which is paid from utility user rates. And then the recap at the bottom there, um, total principal debt for the water and sewer fund is two point three million dollars. For the building authority, six hundred and seventy thousand. And the grand total of all principal debt is three million, well, just over three million dollars. Principal debt paid in fiscal year twenty-four is four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and it will be the same for fiscal year twenty-five. I didn't include it, but we have the enterprise vehicles that are technically part of debt now. We pay about, like, right now, we're paying about eleven thousand dollars a month for leases. Any questions on that slide? Okay, next one, please. This one is a statement of outstanding delinquent taxes and special assessments, which have been levied during the current and preceding fiscal years of the city, and an estimate of the amount thereof which may reasonably be expected to be collected or realized upon during the next fiscal year of the city. So, uh, we are required to keep five tax years on the books. Anything older than that, we can take to the judge and have stricken from the tax roll after we've done our due diligence of trying to collect those taxes. I usually do this every two years because it's kind of, the filing fee is kind of expensive to do it, so, um, I will be doing that this year. And there are three parcels in two thousand seventeen and two for two thousand eighteen. I expect, uh, if you add those two together, two hundred and twenty-some dollars to be stricken. The rest of it, there's a possibility we still might get it. So, the uncollected all entities column, that is the total base tax that is outstanding for the city. Um, that's for sixty-six parcels. I expect that we're gonna strike two hundred and thirty-one thousand of that, and I am, um, hoping that we collect over two hundred and seventy-six thousand. I'm feeling very ambitious and motivated and hoping that we're gonna collect it in the next fiscal year. The city shared the two hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars is a port, is the city's portion of the total base tax. That's our portion of the uncollected all entities column. No special assessments that are delinquent. Um, the property tax admin fee was implemented in two thousand nineteen, and we have almost thirty-eight hundred dollars that's outstanding. The penalty three percent, we've got fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars that needs to be paid. That all comes back to the city. The city keeps the three percent penalty. The interest, there's two hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We get a portion of that based on our millage. The total due is seven hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. Any questions on that one? Okay. Next slide, please. This is the organization funding. The only two that have increased here since last fiscal year is, um, the contribution to the Huron Humane Society, which we increased by twenty-five hundred as per their request. And then also Target Elpina increased by five thousand. It had been forty thousand for many years. Um, so also included here is five thousand to Thunder Bay Arts Council, five thousand for the River Center, and then they asked for twenty-six hundred for, um, Miss Laine's projects. Eight thousand to Huron Undercover Narcotics Team, and twenty thousand to the Park Family Foundation as per our agreement with them. So one hundred and eight thousand one hundred of fiscal year twenty-five budget. We'll go to other organizations. Um, some of the, the budget highlights, or some of them, I guess you call it lowlights. The general fund unassigned fund balance at the end of fiscal year, as I had mentioned, is projected to be at twenty percent, which is at the top of the allowable percentage according to the city's fund balance policy. The city's operating millage will be reduced from fifteen point nine seven seven nine to fifteen point nine two three six as the result of Headley. The DDA's millage is not subject to rollback. The DART millage is currently expired and will appear on the August sixth ballot. The total taxable val- valuation of all property increased by five point six percent for tax year twenty twenty-four. As a reminder, a property owner's value can only increase by a maximum of five percent unless the property transferred ownership and is then uncapped in the calendar year after the sale. The taxable valuation for twenty twenty-three increased by six point five six percent. So I just wanted to put in a little explanation of why it's over five percent. And that's because it's an average of all the properties. And includes ones that have transferred ownership. Salaries, wages, and benefits are higher than the fiscal year twenty-four general fund budget by approximately four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Reasons for this include an increase in the annual contribution to the pension by about seventy-five thousand dollars. So the actual increase is over eighty-one thousand, but the amount that affects the general fund is seventy-five thousand. Um, we're also adding an additional employee in cemetery. We're reallocating the city manager's pay and charging it one hundred percent to the general fund. It used to be ninety-five percent to the general fund and then two and a half percent to each street fund. But, um, doing that is causing some issues because we can only charge, I think, ten percent for administrative expenses, so we're, we're just pulling that out. And so that's more expense in the general fund. Same thing, um, for my, uh, salary and benefits, uh, that's gonna go all to the general fund now, too. We are also filling vacant public safety positions, although two firefighter positions will not be filled at this time. And we are also filling the engineering assistant position. Allocations within the bu- building department changed, which brought more expense into the general fund. All employee groups will receive an increase of three percent in pay, with the exception of the firefighter group who will receive four percent. Across all funds, there was thirteen point one million dollars of projects in the capital improvement plan, and ten point nine million is in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Projects that didn't make it into the general fund budget are a contribution to the Blight Elimination Fund, physical fitness equipment for public safety, budgeting software, security cameras, a server, irrigation system rebuild for the cemetery, Riverwalk lighting, land acquisition, administrative area upgrades in the public safety office, switching the police squad room and the evidence room, fire tablets, and fire functional fitness equipment. And now, city manager Smolinski's gonna talk about the projects that did make it in.
Anna? I just wanted to say thank you, um, to all the work that Anna and her staff put in and department heads and, um, all of our staff that had inputs to the budget. So, I won't take a, a long time here, but, um, one, I wanted to point out the projects that are over fifty thousand or more by fund. So the general fund, um, we have, and, and these are all detailed in the CIP summary. If you have any questions, um, I can try and answer them here as well. BSNA cloud conversion, uh, for seventy-five thousand, city hall window replacement, fifty thousand, eight hundred megahertz radios, a hundred and thirty thousand, salt storage facility, um, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, Michigan volleyball court relocation, three hundred and sixty thousand. And Culligan Plaza, um, finishing that up, five hundred thousand. That's all from the general fund for a total of one point four four million. Major street funds, um, I won't read all of these, but there are a total of, um, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars in that. Um, that does include the third Bagley Hobbs traffic light upgrades, um, construction of that. Local street funds, um, we have a total of three hundred and twenty thousand in projects over fifty thousand. Uh, DDA, um, the facade grants design at four hundred and eighty thousand. Sewer fund, um, main ones to point out there are Taylor Street to Long Lake to Spratt, um, three hundred and thirty-four thousand. June Street to First to Third, um, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, North Second Avenue, which everyone's happy about. That's Water to Huber, um, three hundred and fifty thousand. Or a total there of one point five, um, million. Water fund, major projects, again, those same ones that are in the sewer fund. Um, we also have a big one there to finish up, the clear well replacement, um, with three million. Intake cleaning and chemical lines for three hundred and ten thousand. Fourth Avenue Blair to Lewis, um, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, plus the June Street, um, again, North Second Avenue and, um, water utility AMI system for a total of five point one two one million. And then in our equipment fund, uh, we're replacing another, um, plow truck, which Shannon will be happy about. And that's three hundred and thirty thousand, so grand total of projects over fifty thousand nine point seven eight eight million. Any questions on those projects? All right? Good, thank you.
Does anyone have questions? Anyone? Can the motion be filed?
I move we re-receiving file.
Second.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Noah?
Aye. Thank you. Cost and voter turnout of February twenty-seventh. Now, it's gonna give us a report.
The cost for the February twenty-seventh presidential primary election totaled twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. The largest expense at nine thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars was for election workers' payroll and included early voting. The full cost of the election is expected to be reimbursed by the state. The city had eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-one registered voters at the time of the election. The voter turnout was twenty-three point seven percent, which equals two thousand sixty-eight voters. The total, that total consists of a hundred and sixteen or five point six percent for early voters. Eight hundred and eighty-seven or forty-two point nine percent were absentee voters, and one thousand sixty-five or fifty-one point five percent were in person on election day. The largest voter demographic, demographic at seven hundred and ninety-four or thirty-eight point three percent of the total was yet again comprised of females age sixty and older. Precinct five, located at First United Methodist Church, had the highest turnout among the precincts with four hundred and forty-five or twenty-one point five percent of total voters. While precinct three, located at St. Anne's Parish Center, had the lowest turnout at three hundred and eighty-seven or eighteen point seven percent. As you know, early voting was conducted here at city hall for nine days as required under state law. On April fifteenth, I entered into a municipal agreement with the Charter Township of Elpina for conduct of all future early voting. Most municipalities within the state of Michigan are in either a county agreement or a municipal agreement. It's highly recommended to not conduct early voting as a single municipality like we did. This is, and, Tur Township of Elpina did the same thing. This is information I should have had prior to deciding to conduct it as a single municipality, but unfortunately did not. The decision to enter into a new agreement came about after realizing that council chambers is too small to conduct early voting, especially with not being able to use the platform upon which the council desk rests. And that's because of the step. So we didn't use any of this at all, so that, you know, took away a third. Further, the expense to conduct the early voting is divided among those in the agreement. There is grant funding for the elections in this year's election cycle, but will not be in the future. And the expense will then be that of the city. In the agreement with the township, the early voting will be held at their hall, and duties will be shared as equitably and feasibly as possible. I apologize in advance that voters will need to drive to the township hall to vote early. Our voters are not alone in having to drive, as early voting for the other townships within Elpina County was held at Wilson Township Hall. So you had people, you know, driving from Standbourne Township or Wellington, if they wanted to vote early, they had to drive all the way to Wilson Township Hall. Cause those other seven, um, townships were in their own municipal. Because those other seven townships were in their own municipal agreement. We were a single and Charter Township of Alpena was also a single, but now we're combining forces. I am required to send out new early voting polling location notices to city voters since their location has changed. So this agreement change is something that can be done by the clerk only. So I did go ahead and do that and get that in on time. I did watch a webinar after the presidential primary. And one of the speakers was the former Bureau of Elections Director, Chris Thomas. And he showed a graphic of all the counties in the state of Michigan, and most of them are in a county or municipal agreement. He said, if anything, he said, do it for your mental health. And I couldn't agree more with that because this brought a lot of stress. It's basically like having Election Day times nine more times. So, yeah. And then also the expense of it, because once the grant money runs out, this is going to be on us, so. Michelle, the township clerk, she felt the same as I did, and she wanted to go into this agreement, so. We are, there's grant money available to get a ballot on demand printer where when voters come in, they tell us, or we look up what precinct they're in, whether it's the city or the township, and then they're able to print their ballot right there on demand. It's pretty slick. But yes, as you can see, the cost went up, and that is significantly due to early voting. Because staffing five work, four workers each day for nine days is at least five thousand dollars payroll, so. Any questions on that? No?
Thank you for doing that, Anna.
You're welcome.
Always looking out for us. Motion to receive and file her report?
We receive and file the election information. Turnout.
All second. Go ahead.
I think I already got you.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Noah?
Aye.
And Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
It had to be one, yes.
Thank you. So now we have, we're down to council committee reports, and this will, like last time, end up on our agenda every time. So if there's something new from any committee that you're on, you can report it. So I'm going to start with Carol, and then Jessica.
Sure. Okay. So this go around, I attended three different meetings. Historic District Study Committee, the Thunder Bay River Center. I had a meeting with Judy Kalmanek on the side, and then the Sanctuary Advisory Council, I'll keep it brief. Okay, at the Historic District Study Committee, a really interesting approach called the SWAT, a lot of people have heard of it. We went over, I'm sorry, let me go back. In the Historic District Study Committee, we identified seven different goals and talked about what we want to do in terms of signage, community outreach, feasibility review, zoning in the DOD. That sort of thing, it's all very interesting. I mean, we even talked about how tall buildings should be and things, how much things should cost. It was just a great approach to looking at the history of Alpena and determine if we need a historic society at all. The next one was the Thunder Bay River Center, and we're looking into phase one and phase two of this project, which is going to be moving into the Wildlife Sanctuary Council Committee? Is it council or committee?
Wildlife Sanctuary Committee.
Committee, okay. And then the Sanctuary, the SAC, Sanctuary Advisory, that's where we did the SWAT. We looked at strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats here. And this summer, we're going to have workshops to determine what people want. More fishing, we want libraries, the types of fundings that we're going to get, we'll address any concerns. And then in, I think, twenty twenty five, we're going to go on. And in addition, we'll have a method for collecting data to see how people are using all of the resources that we do have. Great informative kind of council meeting just to see what we do have and what we need. So that's it. Bold and brief.
Thank you.
I have, I have nothing new to report, Mrs. Mayor, other than what I gave at the last meeting.
Okay. And I just have one, we had our recycling cleanup day, it's for countywide cleanup day. It was a fantastic event. I will bring back numbers as soon as we pull them all together, but we had more cars come through than we did last year. I would like to say thank you to the city and everyone who showed up. Chill showed up with her son, and we appreciate that. Dawson worked tires with Mayor Protem. Mike Nowak was on tires, and Carol Walcheck was just knocked it out of the park.
The A-team.
And, yeah. My son, Shannon, a crew member from DPW. We were well represented at Cleanup Day, and I couldn't be prouder. That being said, we have e-waste day on June first. So anyone who has electronics to get rid of, same place. The ice arena will be set up there and ready to take material.
May I add just one thing? I've never done anything like this before, so if you know anyone who just wants to get involved, what a wonderful way to contribute to this community. Saw people I haven't seen in years, former students. It was just a really rewarding experience.
So, yeah, if anyone wants to volunteer on e-waste day, we will take them.
Yeah.
We can't do it without volunteers, we simply can't.
A great workout, get on the tires.
Comes with free aches and pains.
It does, they're all free.
Well, the Alpena County Land Bank Authority, and when you figured out that you probably have done all the learning you can do, there comes a new, oh, what fresh help. I'm learning a whole bunch of different mnemonics and everything else, especially one called the MOU, which is a memo of understanding, which is the last thing we need to get done by Matt Moda so that we can finally get moving on the Bedford Street properties. That is an agreement between the city of Alpena and the Alpena County Land Bank. Also, working on this was working with a third-party administrator request. Sent out a lot of emails out to NMSCA, NIMCOG, Target Alpenas like this to see who would like to be an administrator for this, because that's what MISHDA requires and such. So it's, it's really interesting to work in this stuff. But what I really want to see is these homes built, the blighted properties torn down and moving on up. So it's, it's working, it's getting there, but we got unfortunately till May seventeenth. So that's the reason we've been shaking mats, come on, get this thing out here. That's it.
Thank you for doing that, it's a great committee.
I attended my first hunt team meeting, and I was surprised, honestly. I mean, I guess I should have known that it was open to the public, but I felt that was counterproductive to its purpose, being it's called the Hereon Undercover Narcotics Team. So that was interesting, but I don't have really anything new to report, other than it was nice to meet everybody, and I'm glad to be assigned to that committee. I know they're going to be replacing somebody who's been there for decades, and so they're going to be looking for candidates. But that's going to be posted probably after our next meeting, which I think is going to be July twelfth. So to be determined where. But it was a very short meeting, so I don't have anything to report. And it was my first meeting also, so I have no changes from the previous meetings of which to report on, so.
Thank you. That's all we have, oh, it's me, that's what we have, I'm done, okay, no, I'm not. Okay, we're down to new business, so fireworks show at twenty, at twenty twenty four Alpena County Fair, and Courtney Krenz. There you are. You're hiding.
So I'm Courtney Krenz, I'm the president of the Alpena County Fair Board. And I am just here to ask for the approval from the city to allow our fireworks show at the Alpena County Fair this year. I have attended the county commissioners' meetings, and we have their approval. And I believe that was attached a few of the documents for you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Yeah.
Okay. So are you ready for us?
I'm ready.
So I do have a few questions.
Okay.
It, and correct me if I'm wrong on anything, so most of the activity and people will be outside of the fairgrounds, is that correct? They be in the fairgrounds?
So the fireworks show would take place the final day of fair, which is August seventeenth. We do have a grandstand event that evening, it's the tractor pull, so there will be people inside of the fairgrounds, yes. The goal was to be able to provide a show for the entire community, so there would be people outside of the fairgrounds that could enjoy it as well.
Okay. So if there's people outside the fairgrounds, then, and this is kind of multi-question. So if there's people outside of the fairgrounds, then that falls on the city. So for cleanup, police patrol, are we on the insurance? Have all of those things been thought about?
Yes, so as far as the insurance goes, I'll start with that. I have contacted the fireworks provider, and he will be able to get me a copy of updated insurance with the city on it. I did contact him Friday about it, so it was a little bit of short notice for today, but I will email that as soon as I get it. We also have been in contact with Andy Marso, and all of the boxes have been checked as far as making sure that we have city and police presence.
Okay, and, okay, so cleanup, because we hold events in the city, and when people go away, there's a mess. What happens?
So we are more than willing as a board to help out with that in any way we can. Obviously, this is our first community event this large, so we are willing to take guidance for that, but we are willing to help in any way that we can with that.
Do they have to make a request to the city for services?
So I'd imagine most of the cleanup will be within the county fairgrounds, correct?
Majority, yes.
So, you know, I think that that would fall on, I mean, there's a county, there's county grounds, so that would probably fall on county staff.
Okay.
That's my understanding, because there wouldn't be much outside. Now, as far as, well, then, there could be stuff that goes into the sanctuary, and I know that was one of the, you know, concerns that came up. It's, you've stated that it's biodegradable, but I don't know how quick that is, or if there would be any interaction with wildlife. So can you address that?
Sure, yep. So it is biodegradable within twelve months. We have several volunteers from the community that are willing to help with any immediate cleanup in the river or surrounding areas as well. And then as far as the county grounds cleanup, the Alpena County Fair Board is actually responsible for all that cleanup during fair week anyways, so that's not a problem.
And then you had also asked about police or security, is there going to be any security? Because we haven't committed to any of that or been requested yet.
Okay. As far as security on the fairgrounds, you're saying? Yes, so there, as you can see on the map, there is a safety barrier, actually several of them, that would not allow any public to get close to the launch site. And then we also have worked with the city police and fire staff, and they will be there as well.
I have a question.
The police being there, but. Okay.
Sheriff's Department.
Okay, I was going to say.
Sorry.
I hadn't received anything. Okay, so it is the sheriff then?
Yeah, we have not.
Okay. I was going to say, I'm not going to have any requests, yeah.
Okay, ask a question even about traffic control. Will there need to be someone for traffic control?
It's possible, so we, we have a meeting prior to the fair with the sheriff's department. They handle the calls there if it's county grounds. So it's possible that we will assist them with traffic. We typically do on heavy, you know, traffic events at the fair. We just have not had that meeting. I would imagine potentially be requests for assistance.
Yes, our meeting with the sheriff's department is the beginning of August.
I had a question about, well, it's a little bit about the bike path, but also about the slot that we have for people to download their boats. Do you anticipate closing that off? Because I could see a hundred boats coming in off of Eleventh, all trying to get out there on the water for this.
Yeah, so as far as the bike path goes, that is closed and locked during fair week anyways, just to allow us to have control over who enters and who exits, because it is a cost to enter. So as far as the bike path, that would be taken care of. The boat launch, we can work on that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
That is also the request of the DNR, so anybody does want to go out in the water, they can. These shells are smaller than what we are going to be doing here locally here in a little bit. So six-inch shells, we need four hundred and twenty feet, five-inch shells, we need three hundred and fifty feet. So we're going to, with the DNR, possibly the sheriff's department, if we need to, to put a boat in the water to be able to keep kayakers, anybody that wants to. Is it still a good viewing area for somebody that wants to?
Well, we have more than one launch area for people to put in their boats. I mean, I'm trying to think of where they could go, what, Syntec Park?
Yeah, people could launch from a number of areas.
Yeah, sure, I just don't know of any places, free places to, but anyway. Looking to monitor, that would probably be helpful, too.
Does anyone have questions?
Do you need a motion on this?
Well, and then that's my next thing. So when do you need, when do you need to know by?
As soon as possible. We have started this process in January and have kind of been pulled in different directions on who we need approval from. It took us three months to get approval from the commissioners, so we're hoping to get approval as soon as possible, and as soon as I can get you that copy of the insurance.
And what this request is, is to sign the permit, because it has to be the city, as I understand it, that signs the actual permit.
Okay.
You could include the date of the fireworks show in your motion, August seventeenth.
August seventeenth, and then the motion would have to say to permission, move to approve the signature? Or a move to approve the petition?
I would say a move to approve the
Twenty twenty four permit for fireworks other than consumer or low impact. That's what the permit is titled.
And then put the date in there and authorize the mayor to sign. And the permit is included in that.
Would the motion have to require any sort of, you know, pending proof of insurance or anything like that? And that's?
You could put that in there, and we talked about it on Friday, so.
Yep.
I'm sure they'll send it, but that could be included in the, in the motion.
I would love to make the motion. I don't have the language in front of me, because my computer isn't working, but I will second it if somebody wants.
Really, go ahead.
I wrote, I'm sorry, did you say that it was called the August seventeenth to approve the twenty twenty four petition for fireworks at the Alpena fairgrounds? That be correct?
It's the permit.
A permit to approve signing of a permit for fireworks?
So the actual permit is called, I would say, move to approve the twenty twenty four permit for fireworks at the Alpena County Fairgrounds for August seventeenth, twenty twenty four, and authorize Mayor Johnson to sign the permit.
Right, I'm going to say that before I forget everything you said. Alright, I move that we approve the twenty twenty four permit for fireworks at Alpena City Fairgrounds and authorize Cindy Johnson, Mayor Cindy Johnson, to sign, and that's it? Can you, pending bounty fairgrounds, darn it, okay. Did it come out at least?
Well, don't we include the insurance?
Oh, pending approval, the insurance. Insurance.
Issuance of insurance, adding the city as additional insured.
Pending insurance for LP, the city of Alpena. With the city of Alpena. Adding. Adding.
For the additional insured.
Yeah.
Be adding on that.
I will second.
Uh, it has video.
Not that that's gonna help.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Noak?
Aye.
What do you think?
Councilmember Walchuck?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're B Marina Pump Out Purchase Request and Hover Master Kevin. Oh, Kevin worked cleanup day two.
I was trying to say Kevin.
I was part of the A team.
Yeah, it happens. I haven't been up here for many years, so I'm sorry if this is broken and confusing. But I think we are in need of a new pump out at the Marina. And so unless anybody has any questions, I am recommending a motion of approving purchase order for a Kiko pump out and the adapters from Kiko Incorporated for the total cost of sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty one dollars and forty eight cents.
And just so everyone knows, I did ask this morning if we charge for use of this pump and we do, there's a five dollar charge per boat. And that's the maximum we can charge. Does anyone have questions?
So it looks like you have grants part of it?
Yes, the majority of it. We have grant funding for eleven thousand, seven hundred. The original quote I think we got is from last year. And so due to inflation, the total cost that we would have have to pay went up to a little over four and a half thousand. But we do have marked funding in the Marina Fund to cover that grant match. And I think it would take about four to six weeks for delivery and then Marina staff will be installing it ourselves.
Just as a reminder, last year, counsel to the public that counsel did approve a variance from a purchasing policy to allow the solicitation of quotes, issue a purchase order as well. So that was something that we approved prior to. So there's not multiple bids because there's certain items out there that we have to issue purchase orders for because the companies that allow these pumps and so on don't go through the bidding process.
And we also have proof of a written letter of sole source for these pumps and they're the best in the industry. It's gonna last thirty plus years. So they're super easy to use, very easy to maintain. And they're just better overall pumps.
Yes, the value added service that most of the other marinas offer on a regular basis. So this is something I want to do to make sure that, you know, our marina is up class A plus plus.
Doing our best.
I have no other questions, Mr. Mayor.
So this quote does say it's valid until May fifth.
The old one. We had a completely different one from last year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I move we approve the issuance of the purchase order for the Kiko pump out system and adapters from Kiko Incorporated for the total cost of sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty one dollars and forty eight cents.
Second. Or I forgot to say second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes, aye.
Mayor Protem Noak?
Aye. I think we take it.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Member Kane?
Aye.
Which is great.
Next, we have Marina Fuel Line Replacement. And once again, Kevin?
So due to a few issues, our fuel lines have been red tagged and we are currently unable to add fuel to the system. But we're able to, for the time being, remove fuel from the system and this will help us fix everything. So it's up to par with all of the local, state and federal permits and codes and ordinances so that we can actually continue providing this service to customers at the Marina in the city. We also have another grant to cover most of this funding. The bid process was very short and sweet. Only two companies in this state really do this. And we have found through a lot of questioning and back and forths with emails and phone calls that the Oscar W Larson Company would be the best fit for us at this time. And so I am recommending that you allow us to award the contract for the Marina Fuel Line Replacement to the Oscar W Larson Company for the total cost of fifty five thousand dollars or fifty five thousand, four hundred and fifty four dollars.
Does anyone have questions?
Yes, a quick statement to remind the public as well that the city is making these improvements as part of the Waterways Grant Agreement with the Michigan DNR. And so the city is responsible for fifty one percent of the cost and DNR will cover the remainder on that as well. So that's a great program to help us with this and keep us all up to date on these things as well. I have no other questions, man.
Thank you. Motion?
I move that we award the contract for the Marina Fuel Line Replacement to the Oscar L, excuse me, Oscar W Larson Company for the total cost of fifty five thousand, four hundred and fifty four dollars.
I will second.
I'll second. Any discussion? Anna?
There's an acceptance on the attached document.
We felt that staff could just sign.
That be in the motion?
You want to authorize me to sign it?
That's fine.
Can we add that to the motion?
I made the motion.
Carol, you want?
Do we, how do we, how do we do that? Do I just amend the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to amend the previous motion to include the, to allow Cindy or Rachel to sign off on this document.
Oh, yeah, that's perfect. I'll second the amendment to the motion. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
So Kevin?
Thank you very much.
Kevin was also.
Quite all right.
And he's limping more than the rest of us. Okay, next request for permanent alleyway closure between Second and Third Avenue in downtown Alpena and DPA Executive Director Anne Gentry.
Good evening. For the last two summers, the alleyway between Second and Third Avenue in downtown Alpena has been closed to vehicular traffic and transformed into a pedestrian only gathering space. In twenty twenty three, our vision came to life with the addition of string lights, flower planters planted by Pied Piper students, outdoor tables and chairs, and six pieces of artwork completed through our Fresh Waves project. With these investments, the alleyway got more use than ever. The Fresh Palette, Hopside Brewery and Rusty Petunias used the space for live music and we used it during the Flower Festival, Shades of Fall and the Ice Festival. It is even used by a class reunion this summer while enjoying the social district. We believe it is time to permanently close the alleyway to vehicular traffic so that it can be fully transformed into a safe, welcoming and usable gathering space for people, events and festivals. Shannon Swolinski, Division Head at DPW, and I have been discussing adding a permanent flower tree bed in the alleyway between the parking lot and pedestrian area to replace the concrete blocks. The DDA would be responsible for fundraising and purchasing shrubs and flowers to fill the bed. For this investment, we need the alleyway permanently closed to automobile traffic. We also need to move the two handicap spaces located at the back of the Pocket Park, which is owned by the DDA, into the adjacent parking lot. The DDA Board of Directors approved the recommendation to request the closure of the alleyway between Second and Third Avenue permanently to automobile traffic and relocate the two handicap spaces into Lot One at our April twenty twenty four board meeting. Once the closure is approved, we are recommending the following activities occur before this summer. So DPW would create a permanent flower tree bed between the parking lot and pedestrian area where the concrete barriers currently are. The estimated cost from this that I've got from Shannon, and she's here to answer any questions as well, is between five and six thousand dollars. And this is in the DPW budget. And the DDA would handle fundraising for the plants and purchase of any additional seating for that section of the alleyway. DPW stripes and relocates the two handicap spaces into public parking lot one. And then DPW stripes in a designated loading zone into public parking lot one. I've spoken with the folks at Thunder Bay Arts, who are the only ones who currently park behind that section of the building. I offered them a space in the reserved area if the closure is approved. They have no issue with that arrangement. The dumpster behind soaps and such is moved, so there is no issue there. And then the loading zone will alleviate any issues with pickups and deliveries. This closure and these improvements will enhance pedestrian safety in the alleyway. How it is currently is closed off with access maintained from the parking lot makes it unsafe for pedestrians. I personally witnessed cars attempting to drive through when there are events and activities happening. The addition of a flower bed with tall enough trees and shrubs and handicap spaces will sufficiently alert people that this is a space for people and not cars. Our thought is to add Second and Third Avenue entrances as well, but are still looking at other options to still allow people to walk and bite through the alleyway or eventually add a midwalk crosswalk on Second and Third Avenues. This closure will encourage additional investment and usage by the surrounding businesses. For example, Mangoes is already planning to repurpose their dumpster area into a walk up taco and drink bar. And the DDA plans to partner with the business owners to relocate their dumpsters into the back parking lot and invest in an enclosure for the dumpsters. I appreciate your support of these efforts over the last few years as we, along with the surrounding businesses, have envisioned this space as a vibrant gathering space for people to enjoy. I also just wanted to point out a few changes or a few things to discuss from this map that was included in your packet. So I've got some feedback from businesses that are surrounding the alleyway and some design requests that we can sort out. So one is making sure that there's a walkway or ramp mid-block, kind of like behind either Hopside or the arts gallery so that people that park towards Third Avenue don't have to walk all the way to where the handicap spaces would be. There also is an idea to designate a loading like zone or ten minute parking space kind of in that same area so that if, you know, for small deliveries, don't need to go all the way over, that they could park in that spot, trolley their stuff back and then be on their way. And then the dumpsters continue to be a conversation. We've spoken with GFL. They've told us, just let us know where to put dumpsters and we will empty them. There's a business owner that's willing to lead up a shared system with, it'd be the center building and Mangoes are the only two that are remaining behind that area. And then the DDA would pay for an enclosure. So that is one item that's floating out there that we need to sort out. And then the curbs, as I mentioned, eventually I would love a mid-block crosswalk there because so many people cross. So whether we would want to add a curb on Second and Third or leave it as is with the concrete blocks would be a discussion point as well. And then really ensuring that snow is removed clearly in those areas if those spots are relocated. So this is really to get the ball rolling, to approve the closure so we can move forward these improvements. Right now, the alleyway is closed with this area maintained in the middle through November first. But as Shannon could say, we'd love to get to get moving to make this this bed and then plan for its permanent closure.
So on the handicap parking lots at the DDA arms, and we added those years ago so people were closer to the businesses. Instead of putting them and maybe taking all of the handicap parking lots that are closest to Third where, you know, people have to walk, why don't we flip them and put them at the beginning of that line? Instead of, so they're closer to Third, put them closer to, well, Mangoes would be there. You know, make those first few sections handicap.
Yeah, so the thought would be like where the arrows are right now would be the handicap spots. So right now where you can. Yeah, with the blue square. So that would be they could park and then we would have signage. And they'd be able to enter off of that area.
And all of the ones that are currently marked handicap toward Third Street would just become regular parking.
They could stay there. Yeah.
But that was my, my point. So you're going to take the two that are currently behind Mangoes and add them to the lot.
Right.
But why don't we move all of those handicap parking spots up so they're closer to the businesses for those people who are handicapped? Why are we making them walk the farthest?
That's a great question. Yeah.
People that would access the sidewalk and down Third and come around on Chisholm. And we have two in that in the corner and then two in this lower corner. They're kind of diagonal across the parking lot with each other. That's how we lined them up to begin with.
And the DDA spaces are really extra. We have all the required.
Yeah, they were extra.
Well, and one thing to consider on that, like these ones that are down here where the, we say new curbs. Those, you have a salon and stuff on that side street, then you would be taking those handicap spaces away from those people who could be utilizing that salon or making other stores around that.
So maybe we leave a couple down there, but bring the majority of them up where the activity is.
I think there's only two in that lot currently by Third.
Yeah, the size of the parking lot dictates that we only need four. And so we did two in the upper and then two in this lower.
So that's it. So there's four.
Oh, there are two there. And they're towards the back though, on River.
Okay.
Okay. So that's six total in that.
That would be six instead of just four.
So all the spots abut the alley currently, but all that they're proposing do is move the two that are behind Mangoes back to where that blue box is.
Right. Yeah, right now they're like here at the back of the Pocket Park and they go there.
And do we have just, just, and I'm just thinking, you know, it's becoming a busy area back there. Do we have handicap parking on River Street? For people who want Red Brick, the church?
There are spaces in those parking lots.
Are there? Okay, okay.
I have a question regarding, I don't know if this is a zoning question or a usage, but Culligan Plaza can be rented out and I'm saying Mischikew is the pavilion. Will this be that kind of spot that you rent out?
I mean, I don't foresee ever, you know, charging for it, but it's certainly being utilized for events. We've had a request for a wedding. You know, I think you said there was a reunion down there. So of course, we've had to work out the logistics with the liquor licenses and such and the social district, but I think it's definitely being used for that, but I don't anticipate that there would be a charge.
Right.
The difference is it's public right of way versus own property owned by the city.
Right. So if someone were to schedule an event there, anybody could come through a wedding or.
Right. Right. Right.
Okay.
And that's been, you know, part of the genesis of this is when there's been music back here, like where these handicap spots are, either the city has to come close those off and get people to not drive through or sometimes they're just left open and then cars try to drive through when events are happening. So this would, you know, clarify a lot of that is removing that access there.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have. Anyone else?
No, just a good comment. We've been experimenting with this for several years, starting with our summer year round. And I think this experiment has been fantastic. I mean, it's been one of those areas where you could see where it's being utilized more than it ever was. It's an alley, it's cleaner. It's getting more use. It's nice when nothing is even going on to go down there and see all the outdoor public spaces that people can sit in. So it looks like a, you know, a specified space. So I think this is a great idea. I think it's been a great experiment and I'm happy to see it move forward.
One more question?
Yeah.
What if, what if we have to get? What if we have to get a fire truck?
I was wondering why someone would ask that question yet. We've had numerous discussions on that. So I'll let our fire.
Okay.
We actually, we actually talked about it, really alleyway for us, even the utilize fire truck probable, not probable.
Okay.
Basically, we'd need two focuses prior to the flood.
Okay.
Plus there's overhead lawyers. So we probably would not access that. Everything we would need to access, we'd be either out in the section or two.
Okay. Even an ambulance if I fell down and.
I just want you to come.
Landing on the door.
That's it.
For motions, I move approve request for permanent alleyway closure between Second and Third Avenue in the downtown, in downtown Alpena. I move to approve the request for permanent alleyway closure between Second and Third Avenue in downtown, in downtown Alpena.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
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 And Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, can I just add on the timeline? So now that it's approved, we'll get together and meet with businesses about the layout, and then sort out the dumpsters, and then the handicap spot relocation to close off that access would be the last step, is how I'm envisioning it. I'm looking at you two to make sure you go with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is name change of North Industrial Highway East of US 23 North and City Engineer Stephen Schultz.
So that's what happens when you leave Shannon and Ann on the town. Those alleys, they, yeah. They're not allowed to meet on their own anymore, so. All right, in 2020, the city added the new road segment within a large parcel on US 23 North to the Act 51 Street System, naming it North Industrial Highway, owned by the city. This was mainly due to it being directly across from the other street already in the system called North Industrial Highway. Since then, we have seen many different prospects for developing the property. The interest has progressed from industrial use to more commercial proposals, to possible housing and small office currently. The second parcel approved earlier this year will be more of an office setting, and the purchaser had requested that we investigate a street name change. The suggestion was to ensure that it reflects the natural environment and keep the tree name theme from the previously named Oakleaf Lane for the proposed street to access Hamilton Road in the northern part of this property. Staff discussed this internally and have chosen to suggest Hemlock Lane as a proposed name for this street. An internet search indicated that there were no other streets named Hemlock Lane within Alpena County. This decision is, is to allow the name to be changed just for the purposes of obtaining information from the new parcel, just address information. Going forward, for Act 51 purposes, the official's name change will be brought as a resolution for council approval next year for the April deadline for changes to the street system, once the actual street has been constructed and is passable. So the recommended motion is to approve the street name change for the portion of North Industrial Highway East of US 23 North to Hemlock Lane.
And I have no questions. Does anyone? And a motion?
I move we approve the street name change for a portion of North Industrial Highway East of US 23 to Hemlock Lane.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Anna, go.
So this also has to go to the accessory?
He already knows, yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's already kind of in the, in the mix already with us, so, yeah.
Excellent.
Yep.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Aye.
I would go with me.
Okay.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Pro Tem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next is the water production plant clearwell replacement and infrastructure improvements, and once again, Steve.
The clearwells at the water production plant are an integral part of the water production process, as they hold the finished water and provide contact time for chlorination before the water gets dispersed into the system. Without the clearwell tanks, the water cannot reach the users. The existing clearwells at the water production plant are 1922 and 1935 vintage, and have had extensive repairs recently completed in 2012 and 2013. These repairs expected to have a 15- to 20-year life. In speaking with the previous contractor, they indicated that this was the last, that this was probably the last fix for these structures, as they would likely need replacement the next time they started leaking. Staff made several unsuccessful applications to the Defense Community Infrastructure Program in cooperation with the Alpena Combat Radiance Training Center. Finally, we were able to secure $6 million in funding assistance through the Michigan Economic Development and Workforce Grant. After a period of design, plant production, permit acquisition, and bidding, we are able to award a contract for the replacement of these clearwells. On March 18th, 2024, the city received an open bid for the Water Production Plant Clearwell Replacement and Infrastructure Improvements. Invitations were sent out to seven firms enlisted on three public bid sites, and three bids were received as follows, as you can see them in the table there outlined. The specifications were assembled entirely by our design consultant, Hubble Roth &amp; Clark. As a result, our local bidder's preference awarding was not included in the documents. However, in review of the purchasing policy, it indicates that council reserves the right to enact this when awarding bids. However, as can be seen in the chart, the policy is not directly in play because Meridian Contracting's bid, who was our local bidder in this case, was not within the required 5% for projects over $100,000. Further, Meridian Contracting had indicated that they included a voluntary alternate that would deduct $656,000 and make them the low bidder. However, it does explicitly state on the bid sheets, voluntary alternates proposed by the bidder will not be considered. However, due to the substantial amount, I thought we should investigate with our design engineer. HRC indicated that this savings was realized by demolishing the existing clearwell wall in place instead of cutting sections, removing and demolishing a safe distance away from the building, which is how this was specified. In HRC's opinion, the demolishing must occur a safe distance away from the building to protect the existing infrastructure. HRC also indicated that while both CCC and Meridian provided references for similar projects, they felt that CCC projects were more attributable to the type of work that is being performed under this contract. I have attached a letter from HRC indicating their recommendation for Commercial Contracting Corp. HRC is performing the construction inspection for this project and has worked with CCC on several projects and believes them to be a very capable contractor. The city has worked with Meridian Contracting on many projects, and we also feel that they're capable as well. Based on discussion, council could have two motions to consider. Move to award the Clearwell Replacement and Infrastructure Improvements Project to Commercial Contracting Corp. of Auburn Hills, Michigan, for the unit prices established in the bid for $9,843,000. $843,000. The other option would be to award it to Meridian Contracting for the unit prices for $10,422,587. I put that contract amount in there because, you know, when we use our, our local contractors', you know, preference, we ask them to come down in price. I can't tell you whether that's, I mean, it's not in play as far as the numbers say. So, to me, that would be the contract amount, unless council wants to direct, otherwise they can, they can do something different. And we can kind of move into that conversation, but I just wanted to mention that, you know, as stated above, we received an MUDC grant to cover $6 million of this project. There is fund balance in the water fund to cover a portion of the remainder. It is also important to note that this project is estimated to last, to last one and a half to two years. So that leaves opportunities to delay some projects to make funds available, and also to review possible water sewer rate increases in support of this project. I'm confident that using these various options, we can fund this critical project.
We've been talking about this for quite a while. I was on council when we were talking about the repairs, and at that time, I think,
Yeah.
we were talking about, we're going to need to fund this project at some time, and it seems like we're at the point where we can't kick that road, or that can't on the road anymore. It needs to be done. You know, didn't mean to speak out of turn. Just wanted to state that, you know, we put our purchasing policy in place, you know, to, you know, award things like this for local contractors. We don't, we're not, I'm understanding everything correctly. We're not falling into that category here. You know, my fear is always, I've always been one that loves multiple bids. I think I've got kind of a reputation up here that I've, you know, voted no, that I don't see multiple bids. But my fear is that sometimes if we continue to implement or not take the lowest bidder, who is obviously qualified to handle this project in the way that we, we feel that our consultant is saying is the best way to do it, that we aren't going to, you know, miss out on future bids, companies downstate and so on, that'll just say, well, you know, no matter what we bid, we're going to be awarding things within, you know, to somebody downstate. So that's always my fear. So, we do the bidding process for that, for it to be, everyone got the same documents, everyone reviewed the project, and everyone looked at the same, you know, same information. So, in my opinion, I think that the low bidder in this would be the Commercial Contracting Corp. of Auburn Hills. I mean, just reviewing everything, looking at how we said the ultimate bids would, or ultimate proposals wouldn't, you know, considered. And then, you know, even our consultant is saying that it's not the best way to remove those clearwater wells. So, that's my opinion, you know, after reading everything over. So, that's where I think my head's at, and that's where I think I want to go, is with the original for Commercial Contracting Corp. of Auburn Hills.
I just have one comment on maybe one statement, and maybe you can help me. So in CCC's bid, on page, I'll get there, on page four, well, maybe it's page four. They put a list of people that they may hire, they may hire. And some of these are local contractors, but then they put, or, company.
Yeah.
Is there anything when we bid these out, that if they're going to use contractors that? Because in Meridian's bid, they just put local contractors, keep some of the money local, you know, so I like that. So when we have to send this much money to a company, and not that we have to, I mean, we do because we need this project done, but when we have to spend this kind of money and then not much of it stays here, that concerns me. So, on his bid sheet, how do we, how do we, how do we make sure that he contacts MacArthur? Hey, can, can you do this project?
Well, that typically happens before the bid, or, you know, they, I don't know all the logistics of it, but I believe that MacArthur did indicate to us that he gave him a price or was in line to give him a price, and he did end up going with the other contractor from, from downstate. The only thing I can say to that is that, you know, maybe they're used to working with those people. You know, I, I don't know. I, I can't tell you why they picked who they did. Sometimes it's not just based on price. You know, in, in our world, it's, it's, it's based on price and budget and things like that, but in a contractor world, it's not necessarily based on price. It's who you've worked with in the past. It's, I think you can.
Yes, son, in my opinion, it's disingenuous to put a local contractor on here if they're not going to. Because I think, oh, we get to keep some of the money local, but if that's not the case, then, just my opinion, I wouldn't have put it.
Yeah.
Was, was that provided prior to them deciding which contractor they went with? I'm just curious.
What do you mean, though?
So, when they submitted this bid, because this was back in March, so, you know, did they just recently decide that? Which contractor?
No, it was decided that the day, the day before, the next day or something, I'm not sure. You know, it might have been decided after the bid, yeah. Depending on.
So they could have intended that. I, I don't know. I was just curious about the timing.
Yeah. So, I don't know. If there's anything, we put out these bigger ones about using local contractors here.
Yeah.
If they can do it, I can understand if they can't do it.
Yeah, you, you get into the, you know, logistics in, in alienating possibly downstate contractors. Like Mike had said, you know, it's, it's a, the, the local bidder's preference is a double-edged sword because it, you know, you can use it to support your local people, but then you, you know, I, I don't know.
But even though this contract is going out of the area, this, going out of the area.
Oh, yeah.
And there.
Right.
Put local contractors. Apparently, they're not using it. So all of the money goes, goes downstate.
No, changing of subcontractors after receipt of bids will not be permitted without owner approval. That then refers to Meridian? I'm guessing I was.
No, I know.
Age you were on, so.
No, because, because they put two, so they put MacArthur Construction or?
Yeah, they, they didn't change necessarily. They listed both.
Just listed both.
Yeah. So it's those, it's those word games and different things like that, that, you know.
Yeah, it could be one of those things too, is we're seeing in some of these other contracts, it's like, you know, when you're, when you're bidding something out, and I'm going industrial experiences, basically, who are you comfortable with, and who, who do you know is going to get the job done the way you are, has experience in that kind of background as well? So, I mean, there's always that case of, you know, it could have been a good price, but not having experience with a local as well. I understand what you were saying about putting it in there. It would have been better if it was just left off, you know. But, you know, when it comes down to the dollars and cents of it, you know. But I understand what you're saying.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm torn because I want to support the local. I always want to go with the local, but where do, how do we justify that roughly $600,000 difference?
Right.
As I was talking to Rachel about it this morning, you know, I mean, you're confident, Steve, that the funds, we can recoup them over the next couple of years.
Right.
Four million dollar difference. That's, because there's $6 million that's covered in the grant, right? Then, I mean, $600,000, I'm trying to do, it's impossible, I think, to do a cost benefit analysis, you know, whether that money is going to, you know, if it's spent local, is it still going to circulate through the economy to the extent that it'll be noticeable, or is it, you know, just going to go pay, be paid out to the company anyway, and their wages and the subcontracts? I don't know. It's torn. And then also, you know, MacArthur, we're looking at a similar contracting company that was here last time. You know? And, you know, I'd love for them, like you said, Mayor, you know, I mean, if it would just say that they were guaranteeing to use at least some local, then I, I don't know. I'd feel more confident with it, but at the same time, you know, my, my budget hat goes on, and I think $600,000 is a lot of money. We should definitely go with the lower bid.
Tough to make.
Tough choice.
For me, it would have been an easier pill to swallow had they used local contractors, because they, they put them in there. So, I, I don't, personally, tell me what you're going to do. Don't, don't, that you're going to sugarcoat it and go, oh, because I didn't fall for it. And that upsets me.
If they went with the higher bid, does that mean that that's more, that would, the user rates would increase if necessary?
Theoretically, yeah, yeah.
Or, or cut money elsewhere. At your table, doing different expansions or improvements, right?
Yep.
To try to make up for that money, because we have, you know, a bottomless purse.
Yeah.
You ready for a motion, Senator?
I guess.
Okay. I move we award the Clearwell Replacement Infrastructure Improvements Project, including alternates to Commercial Contracting of Auburn Hills, Michigan, for the unit prices established in the bid contract amount of $9,843,000.
Any more discussion?
Team up here.
For me, eh?
Councilmember Kate?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, DPW Construction Fund project.
All right. In 2008, following the completion of the Public Works Service Center, the city established the DPW Construction Fund. The interest earned from this fund is used for maintenance and onsite capital projects as a standard practice. When the principal is used, however, the request must come before council. The Department of Public Works has needed a new salt storage facility for many years, and this has even been suggested by MDOT during several onsite visits. Over the last several years, the project has been included in the CIP, but never made it through the budget process due to other projects taking precedence. Site paving throughout DPW site, as well as cold storage door replacements, have also been postponed for many years for the same reasons. The original balance in the DPW Construction Fund was $208,479. This fund has been receiving interest and cell phone tower rent from the tower installed at DPW, and we anticipate the total will be approximately $475 on June 30th of this year. $375 is available in cash and $100,000 invested in a CD. With three outstanding projects and the lack of other funding opportunities, staff is proposing to use the cash available in the DPW Construction Fund to complete these long-needed projects. And they're listed there for each project. Using the cash available will leave approximately $100,000 in the fund to grow interest, and the fund will also continue to receive rent from the cell tower. I believe this to be a good use of these funds and in line with the intended purposes when we establish the fund. And you can see the recommended motion there. These funds have already been programmed into the proposed budget in anticipation of you passing this. And of course, if you didn't, then Anna would make me take them out, so.
The only way they made them in is because of this.
And this was Anna's idea.
That's a new one.
I looked into, I called the bond counsel from authority to see if we can do this. And he's like, yeah, you've been holding onto this money for a long time. It's time to do something, but it's almost paid for. And those, those funds are intended for projects at DPW.
We just needed to make sure that we could use it on a separate building on the same side.
Yeah.
No questions, I think, you know, you're tripping by the salt facility. You know, we need one, yeah. We need one for several years again, so it's, it's nice. It's a lot of nice new construction than projects that we, we haven't been getting done. So it's nice to, we can find some funding to make.
I'll tell you that one's holes inside.
Sure.
Don't look too close.
No.
There's a whistle.
Entertaining motion?
I would move we approve the use of a portion not to exceed $375,000 of the DPW Construction Fund to complete the salt storage facility, cold storage doors and site paving projects at the DPW facility in the 2024-25 budget year.
No seconds.
Any discussion?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
And now we're up to police vehicle budget amendments and Chief Eric Camp.
I don't know what I did wrong to make it to 14H. So the good news is we're almost done. Yeah. Okay, Enterprise recently notified the city that three 2025 Ford Interceptors, the police department had an order scheduled for production on May 17, 2024. While this is excellent news, Enterprise initially told us we would likely not see these vehicles until late in calendar year 2024. Due to the faster than expected production time, this requires some budget amendment, amendments for fiscal year 24 and proposed changes to the draft budget for fiscal year 25. So I kind of laid out under those line items what specifically this is going to affect for vehicle leases. In the draft budgets that you were presented tonight for fiscal year 25, there was a requested amount of $66,192 for vehicle leases. With the addition of the three 2025 Ford Interceptors, I will be requesting an increase in fiscal year 25 of $12,216 to cover the additional cost of these vehicles for the entire fiscal year. This budget adjustment will be made prior to the second council meeting in May for your review and approval. For capital vehicles, the upfitting of police vehicles expense to capital vehicles, fiscal year 25 draft budget presented tonight has a recommended budget of $55,000. When preparing the draft budget, it was anticipated the upfitting of the police vehicles would occur in fiscal year 25. However, this expense will now occur partially in fiscal year 24 and 25, with the entire expense being charged to fiscal 24 budget. After speaking with Anna, because we're, we're ordering the equipment in fiscal year 25, even though some of that's going to be installed, or I'm sorry, in 24, some of the equipment will, will be still installed in 25. We have to pay for it out of 24 because that's when we received it. Is that on? Am I spot on here? Okay, okay. So the amended fiscal year budget for capital vehicles is $2,500. So we originally actually budgeted fiscal year 24 for a much higher amount, but we were, again, told by Enterprise we weren't going to get these vehicles in 24. So we made a budget amendment back in March when we had a budget meetings to lower that expense and, you know, plan for it for fiscal year 25. So each of the new 25 patrol vehicles is estimated to cost $16,300 to have the vehicle equipped, graphics installed, and upfitter expenses paid. The total upfitting expense for the three vehicles is approximately $48,900. I'm requesting $46,400 be transferred from the general fund to cover the cost of upfitting the new patrol vehicles. This line item for fiscal year 25 will decrease to $5,000. So requesting the money now, but then there'll be a corresponding decrease in the fiscal year 25. Any questions before I go on to the next one? It's so far, okay. Police in-car video system. The recommended draft budget for 25 presented tonight shows $22,740 for two Motorola in-car video systems. Again, when we prepared the draft budget, we only anticipated ordering two new in-car systems because at the time we had two Chevy Tahos on order. The ordering banks then opened up for, through Enterprise for Ford Interceptors, which was the type of vehicle that really fits our needs. So after speaking with city manager, we decided to put in for three Ford Interceptors. And as I spoke of earlier, those obviously came in quicker than we were anticipating. And we did not budget for three in-car systems, but rather two. Now that we have the third vehicle, we're requesting for a third camera as well. I received an updated quote just this past week from Motorola for a total of $33,800, which represents an increase of $11,060 for the third camera system. I know that sounds pricey for camera systems, however, that does also cover the cloud service for a five year period. So we're locked into that, that price for five years. And after speaking with Steve, the cloud expenses are quite pricey. So I think we're better off to pay them upfront, you know, hopefully get a better deal than we would, you know, five years out.
And I do want to note that we canceled the two Tahos. We're not receiving the five vehicles.
Do we kind of have to juggle that because it's been tough, as we all know, with the vehicle market? So when we all met, we decided to put in for the five, not knowing what we were going to get. And again, we got the three that we were hoping for, but yes, we're not getting five. So I have two recommended motions. The first, move to authorize Treasurer Soik to transfer $46,400 from the general fund to capital vehicles to cover the cost of upfitting three new police vehicles in fiscal year 24. And the second motion is to, our recommended motion is to authorize Treasurer Soik to transfer $33,800 from the general fund to GL number 101-228-973-000, the IT department for the purchase of three Motorola in-car camera systems in fiscal year 24.
Anyone have questions?
So I'll just make all of these changes before next meeting.
One thing I would add, and I don't think I put that in the packet, but we're still under contract with Arrowhead Upfitters through June 30th. So we're good there because the equipment's already going to be ordered, and they're going to start, hopefully start the install prior to that time as well. We should have the vehicles by then.
You have a projected vehicles to be on the street?
I would hope by late summer we'll have them back, assuming that we stay on this timeline, which at this point we should. But again, the vehicle market's been a little bit crazy, but they've assured me that they're going into production in a couple of weeks here.
Good news, excellent.
Yeah, it typically takes the upfitter one to two months to get everything completed. Again, I, I would think sometime in late August or September, they should be on the road. And this really helps us because what we're trying to avoid is a vehicle sitting at the upfitter and not being able to afford or to order the equipment ahead of time because that takes time too for all the equipment to come in. So if the equipment's at the upfitter prior to the vehicles, then they can get rolling as soon as they come in.
I have probably what's a silly question, but what, what is the purpose of the cloud upgrades? Like what, what is, what is the cloud store?
Sure, so in the past, we had city servers that all of our in-car video and body camera and video were stored on. But as you can imagine, that's massive amounts of video that we're storing. And Steve can probably touch on this better than I, but it basically, yeah, it's tough to manage and it's unlimited storage through the cloud. So I, probably cheaper to store it through the cloud than it would be to.
Server.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. And we're talking massive amounts of data.
And you have to keep it.
The whole patrol, the whole time that someone's out patrolling, it's recorded and then that's uploaded to the cloud. Or only when there's activity.
Yeah, so.
Or, you know, turning on the recording.
Yeah, so the, the, the data that's stored via the cloud is only when they activate the camera system. It, it stores that incident. So, but we have, you know, we have 10 or nine patrol vehicles. I believe seven of them are equipped with in-car cameras, and then the officers obviously were the in, or the body worn camera as well. So those are all separate storage. Yeah.
Thank you.
It also allows us to share that information by just a couple of clicks, which in this world is super helpful for staff as well.
That was the other thing I'm running into is trying to download the video of our servers onto something portal.
Correct.
To get somewhere. Now you just share it. They get an email and they click on the link.
Correct.
Efficient.
No questions? We have two motions.
I move to authorize Treasurer Soik to transfer $46,400 from the general fund to capital vehicles to cover the cost of upfitting three police vehicles in fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Mayor Protem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Action carried.
And I move to authorize Treasurer Soik to transfer $33,800 from the general fund to GL number 101-228-973-000, IT department for the purchase of three Motorola in-camera systems for fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Anna.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Noah?
Aye.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn to closed session to discuss pending litigation tax tribunal case 23-001-772, Huntington Bank Shares Michigan Incorporated versus the City of Alpena, threatened slash pending litigation with Alpena Prototype IO Refinery, American Process Incorporated and Grand Bio, and C, pending litigation, Glovey Incorporated versus the City of Alpena, and D, water and sewer litigation update.
Is there support? Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned. Thank you.
I didn't say it.